Do I have a motion to consider the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda?
I gotta pop down and find my little yellow things. There we go. So this connects to conversation we had at our retreat. We're down two bus drivers.
I was just gonna say that.
And we know how hard it is to find bus drivers, keep bus drivers, poach bus drivers from somebody else. We're all fighting for a very, very scarce resource. So I'm sorry that we've lost two bus drivers.
And anyone who's at home listening, who knows somebody who might wanna come work for a great organization and learn how to drive a bus, please reach out.
And we've just hired another ex-student, right? So Ruby's a lifeguard.
I'm a lifeguard.
She's a current student.
Is she still a student?
She graduated last year.
Okay, I'm off.
No, she's a year younger. Mr. Gainer, do you have any comments on the financial reports?
No, unless there are any specific questions, the five-year forecast remains unchanged this month to last. And we are about where we ought to be in terms of percentage of spending for the fiscal year at this point.
And remind us again, the two times a year that we have to send the five-year forecast to the state is, I believe, May and November?
November and May, yep.
Okay, great. All right, so if there are no other comments, Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Mr. Trimble.
Yes.
Ms. Crenshaw.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Okay, I will turn it over to our superintendent Elizabeth Kirby for the work session portion of the meeting.
Thank you very much, and I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Jenkins and Joyce Bukovac to take us through our final reading of the math curriculum adoption.
So we're just gonna, good evening, board members, community and superintendent. We're just gonna, just give us a moment. We're gonna get our presentation up on the screen.
Oh, I was really fast, wasn't I?
I was fast, too.
We're just gonna leave and rejoin.
When the plane lands sooner, make it up in the air.
Tailwind.
There we go.
That's why we love Becky.
Okay, so as I said, good evening, board members, superintendent Kirby, district staff and community members. I'm Dr. Michael Jenkins, Director of Curriculum Instruction, and this is Ms. Joyce Bukovec, our mathematics instructional specialist. Tonight is the third of three opportunities to present to you the committee's recommendation for adoption of high-quality instructional materials for mathematics. Tonight, we are asking the board to take action on this recommendation. So we just wanna remind you of the materials we are asking, we are recommending, we're asking for adoption for next year.
Is ZERN and WAGgle for all students? ZERN and WAGgle are programs for students in kindergarten through eighth-grade math. The ZERN platform is for all students. It is practiced with the current grade-level topics. The program will differentiate based on student performance and provide just-in-time support for prior learning in the context of current grade-level learning for those who need it. A ZERN feature we'd like to highlight are the optional bonuses. They are designated to enrich students and extend their thinking. We recommend the students completing three or more lessons a week try the bonuses. Our second platform, WAGgle, provides targeted support for prior unfinished learning from previous and current grade-level learning. In WAGgle, students will be placed right where they need the support based on their NWEA MAP data. We recommend that students not waggle beyond the grade level and instead complete the digital INTO Math challenges.
So to expand on our approach with the use of these two resources, it's crucial to emphasize our belief in fostering a culture of learning. It's essential for students to have a clear understanding of where they are in their learning and where they're going next. And both of these resources build on this critical level of student clarity. Every student operates within a continuum of learning, and the NWEA MAP aids in identifying where students are in their learning. WAGgle complements this by addressing individual student needs. So we're gonna switch slides here. Additionally, we wondered what students in our gifted and advanced classes thought of ZERN. So we reached out to pilot teacher Ms. Tamika Bradley. She's a gifted fourth and fifth-grade teacher at Boulevard Elementary School. She reported that both grade levels like ZERN for the activities and the structure. Her fourth-grade class thought the multiply and measure mission was challenging, and her fifth-grade class enjoys doing the lessons in the volume, area, and shapes mission.
We also reached out to pilot teacher Ms. Jen Hollander at Roxborough Middle School. She asked her grade-six advanced math class, what do you think of ZERN? I don't think it's working. We would like to share two students' quotes with you. QM says, "I like ZERN because it's interactive, and when you get a question wrong, it helps you through it and ensures you understand the material." And KW said, "I feel like ZERN is a great online source that helps you with the basics, and the bonuses are a great way to review what you've just learned."
So we'd like to thank you for your time and attention to this presentation for the math recommendation. And as I said, we are asking the board to take action on this recommendation. Thank you.
Can I ask, are the ZERN and WAGgle components, is this something that's done during class time or during an enrichment time or as homework, or what's the, what's the general? How are these implemented in real life?
There are some options, and especially depending on the grade level. So it could be something that happens in a what-I-need period. It could be something when teachers are doing stations. Students, some students can be working on different platforms while you have small groups. Some work on it even on the weekends and for homework. So I think there's a lot of different opportunities that we can use it.
Yeah, one of the things from our department, we'll be focused on, you know, our, like, what we would like to recommend, you know, to staff and work with them in terms of the best use of instructional time. Because we know that INTO Math would be the core piece to math instruction, so.
Interesting. Well, I'll be, I'll be very interested to see how these, how these play out. It sounds really cool.
Yeah. So as, as part of my due diligence, I talked to Olivia, actually Olivia talked to me, so my daughter, I should say OT. Keeping with the presentation. OT came home one day and said, "We're doing ZERN in math now, and it's awesome." And I said, "Oh, yeah?" Because I had not brought ZERN up. She was the first one to bring it up in the house. And I said, "What do you like about it?" And she said, "It's what we're actually learning in class," whereas, don't even get her started on edmentum. She threatens to come to board meetings and talk about edmentum.
She's been the first board member to try.
And so she says, "By comparison," she said, "Kids," she said, "some of her peers who don't test well get put into the wrong track with edmentum, and that doesn't happen with ZERN. It's relevant to what they're working on in class," which I think is a, is a big positive. I also talked to a neighbor who's a teacher who was part of the pilot, and she said that, that she, she likes it more than she doesn't like it, which doesn't sound overwhelmingly positive, but she had some really good points. And she, and her points were, that were on the not positive was in implementation and how the district will choose to implement in terms of having flexibility, particular, particularly at younger grades for a teacher to, you know, deviate as needed from kind of the playbook in order to personalize, you know, and meet students where they're at and everything. So I think, but that's, you know, that's like devils in the details kind of stuff. But she said, in terms of the product, she likes it, and she liked the K through eight, you know, continuity between grades. But it's just going to be, you know, getting, getting everybody kind of on the same playbook and all of that, and that, you know, that takes, that does take time. That, that will be work that will have to be done.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. We, we do appreciate that feedback. Thank you, yeah.
I move that the Cleveland Heights University Heights School Board adopt the recommended math curriculum.
I'll second that.
Before I ask Mr. Gainer to call the roll, I did wanna make a statement, just that I wanted to thank you guys and your team for the work you put into bringing us this. I loved how you got student feedback and you shared those direct quotes with us. That really makes me a lot more confident in the decision of what we're gonna do when the students who are going to be the, the people who have to learn this way or learn using this curriculum are positive about it. That says a lot to your team, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We never had to ask anything twice. I mean, we asked it once, and then you came back with, here are the answers.
Oh, yeah, and you came back with even more depth than we expected, so thank you very much.
Yeah, awesome job.
So any other comments?
I had a student who struggled in math because his education was kind of chopped up, and seeing how this follows and allows you to backtrack and make up is very heartening to me because I know that that can be, that, you know, sometimes you miss something because you're out for a week or a month or whatever, and you need to be able to get back on track. And I'm, this sounds like it will help a lot.
It struck me that, you know, we've talked about, and we're in the process of lobbying the legislature to allow students to make up days that they missed in terms of how they count toward chronic absenteeism. And it seems to me that, that these platforms, ZERN and the other, whose name is already...
WAGgle.
WAGgle, thank you. ZERN and WAGgle, be a great law firm. That these would be potentially two opportunities for kids to really come on a Saturday and do something that is valuable and really that is catered to their precise needs and that would take them that step forward that would literally make up missed, from missed time. So that's very cool.
Okay, so we had the second, we had the motion, we had the second, so I think, Mr. Gainer, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Crenshaw.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Mr. Trimble.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to the next item, which is our facilities. Now you can start working on, you know, the PD and the implementation and the adoption.
So George and our visitors are getting set. Are you gonna drive it, George? You'll drive it? All right. Are you in the meet or the link?
There he is. Yeah, let's do a touchscreen.
Footprint buildings went up in 74, George. Right?
Yep.
It was a quiet, it was a statement, yes.
They were intended to be 25-year buildings.
That's a long time ago.
Hey, Mark, I just did that. It's not...
It's amazing.
Three, twenty-five.
I remember moving into Coventry Elementary School, from the old Coventry Elementary School. We carried, we carried books and desks.
From the old building to the new one?
Swear to God.
So the old building must have been closer to Ucalhite School of Arts?
Yeah, it was up where the Peace Park is now.
Right.
Great building.
Awesome. We're here. Good evening, board members, Ms. Kirby, Mr. Gainer.
Good evening.
We're here to discuss the facilities of our district. I have some guests tonight. We have Mr. Dag, the operations manager, Mr. Jason Nold at the very end there. He's the GPT architect that we've been using for the last couple of years. Mr. Martin Zakes next. He's an engineer for GPD. And, excuse me.
Stike.
Yeah, Mr. Brad Stikes. Did I pronounce that close enough?
Yeah, close enough.
Brad's okay. Another engineer that helped work on this. So we're, we're talking about goal five, ensure that the district has the necessary finances and infrastructure to meet its student outcome goals. So the goals for tonight's presentation, we're gonna discuss the permanent improvement fund. We'll refer to that as PI throughout the discussion here. Facilities overview, prioritizing HVAC equipment replacement and what that involves assessing various factors to determine which components or systems need attention first. And we'll go through those key considerations. We'll talk the assessment of the current condition of the CHUH heating, ventilation, air conditioning systems of the elementary schools, and that's what GPD is here to go through. And then we'll look ahead at some planned projects. So the district's permanent improvement fund, I gave you a couple of links here. So the first link, and these are available on our website also under business services. But I have a list of projects that the district has accomplished from 1998 through 2023. I list them by building and then what was done in the building. And then I have a link for the 10-year plan that's shared with you. Resources that we used to develop the 10-year plan, operations and maintenance staff, we conduct discussions. Mr. Dag will talk to the custodians. We'll get together with the trades, the grounds, and we'll use the work order system to find out what's breaking down more than once and needs some attention. Architects and consultants are very important to this process. So Taylor Consulting's not here tonight, but Taylor Consulting has been working with us since I've been here. Actually, Greg Taylor started as a roofer in the district, if I'm not mistaken.
And then he started his own consulting company?
And he started his own consulting company.
Good for him.
But he actually gets up on our roofs, walks them every year. Taj is a roofer at heart, too. They go up there and they inspect the roofs. And... That's a good thing.
Taj just swallowed his tongue.
He's also a flooring man, too, so he does floors. But actually Greg Taylor's son is an engineer, and he is, does the facades for us. So he's done the investigation into the facades of the facilities, along with the windows and doors. So these, their involvement has been since 2020, since I've been here, they've been developing these plans. So we just asked, they've been doing 10-year plans all along. I just changed the five-year plan to a 10-year plan to incorporate theirs and then the different things that we know we have needs. And then GPD architects and engineers, they've been with us for the last four years, four or five. And they, they're, we're fortunate because typically I'm supposed to go out every year to solicit bids for architects to use in the district. But Ohio School Council has done that work for us, and they have been successful for the last few years of retaining that, and we've been using them. So they're very knowledgeable of our systems. I also have, I don't wanna bring them in here and clutter up the front, but we have, I'll just list these really quick. 2007, the district-wide facility evaluations, these are binders I have in my office. Eric Kinnick-Goss was the architect at that time. Peters, Tansen, Bandwin were the engineering firm at that time. They did an investigation of all our schools. 2010, Ohio School Facility Commission, I have binders of reports from them. 2017, a capital asset condition report was conducted by K2M Architects. 2022, we're gonna review some of GPD's, that was the elementary cooling study that they did for us. And 2023, the most recent was the elementary school HVAC assessment. So just to give you an idea of what our elementary school HVAC systems, and that's what we're focusing on, of course, because our high school and two middle schools have just been recently renovated. The schools that have the systems that provide heat and air conditioning throughout the facilities are footprint buildings. Boulevard, Fairfax and Delisle, all built in 1974, and that's the open footprint-style schools that we have. They have four rooftop units on each of them. And the, when I list the classrooms in this presentation, it's the general ed classroom. So there are more space that is used for education, but it's easier for me to remember the bigger classrooms. So school systems that provide heat from boilers to classroom units, ventilators. School offices and media centers typically have air conditioning in them. So Canterbury, 1927, that has steam. Garrity, 1954, has steam also. Noble, 1922, Oxford, 1928, and Roxborough Elementary, 1920. So you can see the cluster of those schools are, are pretty old. So we're dealing with older systems in, in those areas. So this next, these next few slides are important. This is the type of information that we use when we try to prioritize the needs of what, as far as HVAC replacements within our schools. So the age of equipment, and this is not in any particular order, so it's not from most important to least. Age of equipment, so older HVAC equipment may be less energy-efficient, of course, and more prone to breakdown. Prior, we prioritize replacement equipment that has exceeded its life expectancy. And you'll see GPD will be referring to some of their findings. The majority of our equipment in the older schools is way beyond its life expectancy. Energy efficiency, of course, is important. Identify and replace equipment with low-energy-efficient ratings. Upgrading to more efficient models can lead to long-term energy savings. Repair cost, compare the cost of repairs with the cost of replacement. If the repair costs are high and the equipment is near the end of its life, replacement may be more cost-effective. And we are at that point with our rooftop systems. System performance, evaluate the overall performance of the HVAC system. If certain components are consistently underperforming or if comfort levels are compromised, then those components should be prioritized for replacement. Technological obsolescence, consider replacing outdated technology with new or more advanced systems. Modern HVAC systems often come with improved features, energy efficiency and smart controls. So we recently upgraded all the HVAC controls in our district, which, again, that's just controlling the old equipment, but it is all updated. The maintenance history, which we do have, we, we actually have two rooms at Millikan right now with the history of this district's equipment. And from the, the projects that have been improved to just data and work orders that, and the work that's been conducted on these systems. So reviewing the maintenance history of the equipment, if particular components require frequent repairs or has a history of issues, it may be more cost-effective to replace it. And that's where we're at with the rooftop units that we decided to move ahead with on top of the footprint buildings. Compatibility, the compatibility of the integration. Ensure the replacement equipment is compatible with existing components and can integrate seamlessly into the current HVAC system. This can save costs on modification installations. And we made sure that our control system was a type that can, we can put any type of equipment in there and it can all talk to each other. Regulatory compliance, prioritize replacements that align with current building codes and environmental regulations. This ensures compliance with legal requirements, and our architects and engineers are experts at doing that when they start designing the replacements. And critical systems, identify and prioritize replacements for HVAC components that are critical to the operation of essential systems, such as those supporting sensitive equipment or processes. An example of that is the IT main air conditioning unit for the, the head-end room at Delisle. That's being done this year because we, we repair that way too frequently. And then, of course, budget constraints. Consider budget limitations and prioritize replacements based on the available financial resources. Create a phased plan for replacements if needed, and we do that with the 10-year plan. Occupant comfort and productivity, assess the impact of the HVAC system performance and occupant comfort and productivity. Prioritize replacements that contribute to a comfortable and productive indoor environment. Environmental impact, consider the environmental impact of the HVAC equipment. Newer systems often have features that reduce greenhouse gas emissions and overall environmental footprint. Warranty and support, evaluate the warranty and support options for replacement equipment. A robust warranty can provide added protection and peace of mind. Future expansion plans, consider future expansion or changes in building usage. Choose equipment that can accommodate potential changes in growth in a facility. And professional assessments, seek input from HVAC professionals who conduct thorough assessment of the existing systems and provide recommendations based on their expertise. All of those above items we have used in the development of this 10-year plan. So I'm gonna turn it over now to GPD. They're gonna talk about the assessment that they conducted most recently in the elementary schools. And this is, this is actually the same presentation that you had at the retreat that we're gonna go over again. So I'll turn it over to Jason or...
Jason needs a microphone.
No.
Can you slide it over? Thank you. Otherwise, people at home won't be able to hear.
Just a little introduction to GPD group. We're a full-service architect-engineering firm. We're headquartered in Akron, but we all work out of the Cleveland or Garfield Heights offices. We're about 700 employees at this point right now. But full service means we have both architecture and engineering in-house. I'm, as George indicated, an architect, so this is, the HVAC engineering is not my specialty. That's why you're gonna hear from, from these two gentlemen more. But just a little bit about the, the presentation here, you know, this is gonna be a very brief summary, and we're gonna just try to focus on highlighting some of the, the approach to, to, to the assessment and then some of the findings. We know you have a lot of difficult decisions to make, and you've gotta compare these against other factors. So we're, we're just trying to provide you with the relevant data and information so that you can do that. And, you know, we'll certainly be here for questions and answers after, at the end of it, so.
Sure.
With that, Brad.
All right. So the first thing that we did, we tried to develop basically a process of how to approach this many buildings. And given the, the age that we saw, we knew we were gonna see some things that were, there, there wasn't gonna be a lot of good news. We, we assumed that going into it. So we went through, met Taj and his whole maintenance crew, and then basically got into all the existing information that we had there. And then identified all the major pieces of equipment and then started going out in the field and went... And then identified all the major pieces of equipment and then started going out in the field and went through it, opened it. Um, basically went through everything that was there. And then we really wanted to hone in on what those critical pieces were, the ones that close a school or, you know, basically, what's it?
Is the slide's good?
No, this is good right here.
It said your microphone's off, but.
Oh, that's the, yeah, it's what he's presenting, the computer.
The computer's mic.
Right.
We want that one off, otherwise we give feedback.
So it was just a little bit of a getting under, getting to understand each building a little bit. Call it speed dating for buildings, if you will. So we went through and tried to understand the, all the systems that make them go specific to the HVAC side of things. Once we went through that, basically, uh, we worked with the in-house team here, the maintenance folks, to basically prioritize what pieces were critical versus, um, the things that, you know, I can steal parts from this one and put it on that one. It's like, what, what decisions they have to make every day. So we went through all those, um, and then we gave them kind of a rating system. And you can see kind of the findings here. We have, uh, you know, the probability of a future failure. Uh, we gave it a few, uh, I think we color-coded them, uh, just kind of a red-green, just to kind of give you a high level. Hey, this is red, this is one of those things that needs to be taken a look at. And then we even filtered it down from there to the most critical. So in other words, uh, in that report, if it was highlighted red, it was basically, failure is imminent. Doesn't mean it's critical, it just failure was imminent. So, you know, some things can go and some things can have to run all the time. Go ahead and change. One of the other major factors too was with, uh, speaking with the maintenance people and then going through all the documentation was the history of repairs. And you can see them elevate, they just kind of ramp up. And most of this equipment that is being identified, um, for replacement, there's a whole bunch of elements. One, there is no support from the manufacturer anymore, so they're having to fabricate steel parts. They have people, you know, using parts that don't belong there just to make the thing run, if you will. You know, control panels, you name it. And then basically going through there and then basically deciding what type of options do you have? In other words, can you take two of them, combine them together and make one good one? Should you replace these? What, what's the long-term run on this thing, um, overall on these? And basically what we found, uh, going through all this equipment is it needs to be replaced. There, there, there's a whole bunch of elements. One of them, the, the main feature of these is the type of refrigerant that they use within these is no longer available. Uh, no one services it, no one makes it. In fact, you guys might be the last ones on the planet that have any left. There's not a lot left of it. Um, so replacement parts and, and service on these things is next to impossible. So you see your repair times get longer and longer. Outages will be, you know, will continue to elevate and there's just going to be a point where there's even, I think some of this equipment is at half capacity because they don't have the parts to replace something on there. So we wanted to take, give them a few different approaches. Do you replace them? Do you phase, do you replace it as a whole school district? Do you handle, uh, individual buildings one at a time? Or do you say, okay, we're going to pick four units this year or three units on three of the footprint buildings? Some sort of strategy. So we kind of discussed all that and went through it. While we were doing that, obviously there was, we kind of looked into what would it take to air-condition everything? Because a lot of these buildings do not have air conditioning in general. So we kind of looked, took a look at what would it take to add air conditioning into this building? And it, it wasn't necessarily practical on the really old buildings. Believe it or not, there was space to do it because there's a lot of underground space. Um, but then that isn't always optimal for repairs and people that come to service this stuff. So you, you tend to have to drill a lot of holes, you know, repair a lot of walls when you're trying to put newer systems into older buildings and it's not always practical. It really isn't, so.
The route we went on some recent projects were direct replacement. And that's because we didn't want the electrical characteristics to change. Uh, a lot of these locations are maxed out on electrical power as well. So we couldn't increase capacity at all. And then one of the most recent projects we've done was at Boulevard, replacement of the multi-zone air handlers. There's four on the roof there. We chose to go with multi-zone again because if we went with a different system, that would have required, uh, larger budget and getting into the school. So the project is pulling the old multi-zone units off the roof and then putting new ones right back on the roof to limit downtime and work within a budget. The cooling upgrades, um, so we did a cool, a separate cooling study. And the biggest downside of that is electrical. A lot of these locations, you would need electrical upgrades to get cooling to happen. And then we went with newer systems, um, newer technologies for hopefully better future maintenance and easier serviceability. What Brad was referring to is R22 is the refrigerant that was popular with some of the older systems. So they're now, R22 is banned and we have new refrigerants that we're working with.
You hear there's a black market in that stuff.
Well, there is.
Yeah, a lucrative black market, yeah. So the current needs, uh, on the next slide shows three of the larger rooftops. And that was the project I was referring to. That was the multi-zone units over at Boulevard. So that project is underway. Uh, the units are being shipped and should arrive end of July. It will be installed before school starts for 2020, the end of, or fall of 24. And the three smaller units that support I, IT, that project is in design right now. It's going to be going to bidding in a month or so. And that will help ease some concerns about the age of the units and their reliability. The existing equipment, we, um, did an assessment on all the equipment, but there's 23 major pieces of equipment that were, that should be replaced immediately. Uh, we, that budget you see up there is based off some 2022 numbers. So unfortunately, the number is higher now. I talked to a rep today, he said their April 1 prices are expected to go up 10%. So we're.
So what, you mean the price didn't come down when the supply chain caught up?
I asked that exact question. And no, it's going up on April 1st. The unit ventilators for each classroom were listed as replaced, but assessed in a prior cooling study from April of 2022. Uh, a lot of the unit ventilators were heat-only. As I mentioned, if you wanted to go with cooling, you'd probably need deep pockets to go with the electrical upgrades associated with. And that cooling study describes all the pricing scenarios associated with that.
One thing I want to say before we, so when, it sounded pretty dire. But what, uh, the HVAC guys are capable of doing is, so example Boulevard. When we pull those units off the roof, we'll reclaim all the refrigerant. They have the capability of doing that. Uh, we do have, I think, a pallet of R22 right now.
We have a part, we have a half pallet.
Yeah, it's, it is very, very difficult to get. But so, but we are capable of reclaiming it and we will salvage whatever is working and save it for, uh, the other two buildings that we have operating, so. And we do that at every chance we get.
And I, I just want to mention, so that the community is constantly reminded, what we're talking about right now, all of the work storing and repurposing and making Frankensteins is done at the Milliken site. People sometimes think that, that our Milliken building is empty. It is anything but empty. It is an incredible asset that allows us to do the work like we're, we're talking about right now, extending the useful life of the infrastructure that we have. Um, and Milliken is a great asset to the district and the community because of that.
As a, as a new board member, newer board member?
Uh, I'd love to take a tour of Milliken because I've actually, I've, I've never been inside.
I was just going to ask if you and Gabe had toured that.
I asked her a minute ago.
It's a wonderful field trip.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should tour all the buildings.
Just need to let me know when you're available and I'll get you in. You can see the barn too, the barn's an interesting.
The barn's the best part.
I also wanted to run over the additional facilities, just so we don't leave them out. So you do have, uh, schools that are totally heated and air-conditioned, of course, or Monticello, Rox Middle, Heights High School and the Board of Ed. School facilities that have systems, again, that provide heat to boilers. Um, Wiley, of course, steam with boilers. Uh, and the offices, office area and the media center has air conditioning. And the, um, music wing that addition has air conditioning. And Milliken is a 1953 building with just steam to it. So going over some planned projects, so this current fiscal year, 2023, 2024, those are all the projects that we currently are, have already been, we started last summer. Uh, so from the Board of Ed roof, we replaced some buses, district parking lot and seal coating repairs, elementary school smart boards, uh, that was phase two. Garrity Media Center HVAC unit due to, uh, supply concerns. At the time we started that, that project is actually not done yet. It's close to being finished, correct?
Correct.
The IT district head-end room, uh, HVAC, that is still in progress, you know, is, uh, delayed. Uh, they're going to do that, I think they're starting it next week. We're going to finish it in the summertime. That's all the, the IT closets that are in all the facilities. Those units needed to be replaced. Uh, Milliken had roof drains that needed to be repaired because the roof drains were leaking into the building and we had to stop that. Uh, if you notice in, in the projects, if you look, look back at the most recent ones, we try to not do any improvements at the buildings we don't use for students. Uh, Noble Elementary School, we did phase two of the windows and we did the roofs, uh, sections B, C and M. Those indicate multiple levels of roofs. So if you go like the high school, it's how many different roof levels?
It's 64 different roof levels.
Yeah, just the high school alone. Uh, so anytime you see a designation like that, we're just touching one level on a particular building. So what's planned?
Before you get into what's planned, so the smart boards, was that only two phases?
Yes.
Okay, so that's complete? And with Noble Elementary Windows, is that also only two phases? So that's complete. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
I have a question as well. Historically, you've allocated $300,000 a year for bus replacements?
Yes.
And that's supposed to buy us three buses?
Yes.
It's not buying us three buses anymore.
No.
So does that number need to go up or do we need to drop the number of buses we can rotate out?
What? No, I, I increased the number.
Okay. Because it's more like 400,000 these days, right?
I think I'm increasing it to three, I want to say 340,000. But, uh, this will be the last year I planned on taking out a permanent improvement. Anything that lasts over five years, we can take out a permanent improvement.
Right.
And due to the building's needs, I had a discussion with Mr. Gaynor and we, I'm going to start taking that out of, uh, general fund.
General operating.
Right.
Okay.
This current fiscal year coming up, 2024, 2025, feel we can afford to take the buses out of that and still complete the projects that we, we have needs for immediately.
Okay.
So we already went out to bid and, uh, were awarded, and you had approved already, the Boulevard HVAC replacements. Um, Delisle IT main data room, that's being, uh, in design right now. High school, middle school track maintenance, that's due for, uh, typical maintenance on the, on the tracks, which includes then restriping them. And Oxford Masonry, that's been already out to been awarded. And that is the last, well, it's the last school building that we have that needed to have its facade done. Uh, Wiley still needs it, Milliken still needs it, but again, we'll put those off down the road when we can afford to do it. And Rox Middle Tunnel Slab, that is a, if you pull in between the, the, the back parking lot and you, they have the gyms on the left and the, the lower.
Music wing on the other side.
Yeah, there's a tunnel that goes and connects in between the two buildings. And that, uh, actually is upheaving and preventing the doors going into the school side of it there and from operating properly, so we have that, uh. Actually, we did not have to go out to bid because it was under $50,000. We got a con, we had a couple of bids that GPD was able to receive and we have a contractor that's awarded that project. I'm going to complete that.
So George, a couple of years ago, we thought that we were resolving that by rerouting some, um, uh, storm lines, right? And have we found that we need, that it needs a different fix to avoid the problem in the future? Or have we resolved the problem and now we're just, we're fixing the damage?
That, I'll let Taj speak to that, but that was, that, that was when we replaced all the, the storm drains that were in that corridor.
I remember.
The area in question was just set up, so, uh, when they had, uh, poured the new roof over it, when we had the building, uh, renovated, they didn't connect in properly to the, um, what we call the music wing.
Right.
Portion of it. By doing that, crack opened up.
Hmm.
Water got in.
Right.
And there is a structural beam that sits underneath that door and it started to expand. That's what caused the upheaval.
It's a freezing we got.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just gradually has gotten worse.
So this repair repairs, this replaces the slab and, and reinforces that?
It'll reinforce that area, I believe, and it'll also make it so that, that no more water can migrate in.
Good.
Causing any more issues. Water.
And they actually show a couple more, 2025, 2026. Again, we, uh, I try to incorporate district parking lot and seal coating into every year because you'll notice that our, because of the salt that we use throughout the district, we have needs every year. Some years get worse than others. And at some point, I'm going to have to really address sidewalks. And this year I do have GPD looking at some of our worst sidewalk conditions that need to be addressed and we're going to try to focus some funds on those. Canterbury roof replacements due, that's, you can see the different levels we're doing there. Uh, Canterbury roof, we actually went out for bids a couple of years ago and didn't receive any, so we're hoping to have better luck this time. Delisle rooftop HVAC, I want to incorporate those replacements into 2025, 2026. And then another roof replacement for F and G at Garrity. And then 2026, 2027, again, district parking lots, Canterbury roof, there's different levels there that need attention. High school turf replacement, now that's due, that is beyond its, that's beyond its 10 years. Uh, but the, we have a company that maintains that for us and they do yearly maintenance on us. And they believe that we, uh, our turf is still, they, they test it with the fall. I don't know what that actual test is called, but they.
They dropped something heavy from a fixed point.
And they say it's still safe for, for use.
Yeah.
Uh, but at that, 26, 27, we're probably looking at replacing that. Now, when we installed that, it was 300 and some thousand dollars. We're probably looking around 750 is an estimate. Um, and then Monticello Roof Replacement H and J. And again, of course, this goes out in the 10-year plan that I shared well out into 2036, I believe. And that takes us to questions.
I've got a, a couple. The, the track, um, repairs and painting is, I'm assuming that's not a big ticket item, terribly big ticket item. And what I'm getting to is, does it make sense to align that with turf repair?
If we could, yes. Uh, right, unfortunately, right now Heights High Track needs it.
Okay.
Uh, it definitely needs the striping, there's some minor repairs, but at the same, I, I go to Joe Diamato, we look at it with the grounds and with Taj and, uh, it's probably at a point where it needs to be resurfaced.
It gets a ton of use. Um, I was, I was interested in the, the roofing, um, the roof projects that you had. So for instance, in 25, 26, you've got three sections of Canterbury. 26, 27, you've got another three sections of Canterbury. There's no efficiency that you can get by switching those and getting the crew there and just.
Different roofs, so you have, again, Taj can speak more to these, uh, but it's got the shingle roofs and then you have flat, flat deck roofs.
So it's different companies anyway?
You also have a steel, steel standing scene room.
Yep, yes, you do. Okay, that, thank you, I was just sort of.
Yeah, if, if there is that possibility, we'd definitely do that.
Thank you.
When, when we bid out these projects, are we bidding them out as individual pieces? Or is there any way to like leverage economies of scale by bidding out like multi-phase projects? Like to gang together the, you know, multi, a couple of buildings to try to?
We do that if it makes sense. So for a roof project, if we can combine multiple roofs off of different buildings and it's the same approach, if it's a shingle roof on Canterbury and shingle roof on the other s, uh, school that we're doing, we would, we could do that. other school that we're doing, we would, we could do that. If you're trying to mix like an HVAC project with a roof project, no. And you're trying to get a general contractor to manage it when we're, we're better off getting a specific roofer to do roofing work and an HVAC contractor to do the...
Or the GC.
Right.
Pretty much.
And the other thing to keep in mind is some of these repairs have to be done over breaks.
Right.
So you can't make the project so large that you can't get it done over a summer break or a winter break because then it impacts schools.
That's actually one of our biggest challenges, getting bids in, is the limited timeframe that we offer them.
Mm-hmm.
I'm really glad that we are finishing the masonry at Oxford.
Yeah, I've had my fingers crossed for two years now.
Yeah, I think we've all been, yeah.
That nothing would fall and hurt anybody. And then the next masonry doesn't happen until, what, we have a few years before, I'm looking at the wrong file, it's over here.
Garrity, I believe, needs, Wiley needs tuck pointing, it's at his Milliken.
The sidewalk work...
Garrity needs tuck pointing.
Is that something that we can do in-house or do we have so much that it doesn't make sense to do it? I thought that we did it.
We used to have a crew that, most of them retired.
Taj likes to do concrete, right?
That would do a lot of the sidewalks themselves.
His knees don't hurt at all.
His hip does though, so. Is that hip? I just thought of that. We, we did, we had a crew that would do a lot of sidewalk work.
Because the sidewalks outside Garrity are not looking good.
We have issues every school.
I know. It's just whichever building I can remember now as opposed to could remember yesterday.
Heights High School, going up Budnor. That, I think that's, we actually have you looking at that one this year.
There's weird drainage over there.
Yeah.
So my question is for GPD. Do you all produce any type of minority participation reports for your bids from time to time or, I mean, you said your organization has over 700 employees.
We do, yeah. We also have what we call an incubator program where we try to work with some disadvantaged firms and help, provide them free office space that they can use, free supplies and help try to grow some of them and we then use them on some of our projects as a subconsultant as well as, you know...
Have you done any of that, have any of those firms participated in any of the work that you've done for the district?
I have to go back and check. I don't believe we have at this point yet. We do on some of our other school projects that they have, but I'm not quite sure specifically for your district.
Thank you.
I have inquired with our attorney and we can, I think there is something we can incorporate in the future bids to request that. I'm just waiting for some feedback from that.
Oh, thank you.
I'll give you that information.
As somebody with a house that was built in the 20s with a steam boiler that's pretty big and old-looking, I can really feel for...
I second.
I feel for these projects. Because, yeah, it's scary.
You don't like the knocking?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That is the one thing I can say about this district is almost, well, I can't say almost everyone because there is a few new housing, but much of the housing stock in this district is old and most homeowners and property owners can relate to everything that you're talking about because we live it. And we also know that some of these projects, you start out doing one thing and you uncover other issues that require, you know, you uncover things that have to be fixed. And I give you a lot of credit, your team, for the amount of work that you guys do and the amount of juggling that you have to do. And, you know, this room is a perfect example of the reuse of the items that you use. Your team is always repurposing, reusing, recycling, and so thank you and thank you for all the work that you do.
Yes, we have, we have really good employees here.
So the permanent improvement fund is approximately $3 million a year we have available.
Yes.
And with that, you work magic, we know that. What happens on the years when technically you're running a deficit? Where does that get advanced from within our financial structures?
Doesn't.
Oops, sorry, I didn't mean to...
Not running a deficit since, how long's it been Scott?
It's been a while.
It's been quite a while. If it happens, we usually, I'm going to use the word borrow ahead. So when you, if I plan projects out...
So fiscal '23, '24 is showing a balance of negative $900,000, say. So that's going to have to come out of the following year's PI allotment.
If you remember, we've had discussions before, right, right now we have a positive balance of, I had a camera last night, ran it, it's over a million dollars that I'm trying, I'm trying to keep that there so we don't get to a point, a point where we're spending ahead.
Okay.
All right, and if you guys remember...
So that's the cushion for this current fiscal year.
Yeah, and if you guys remember, when we did the middle school projects, we ended up...
Yes, we ended up putting money back in.
Money back into the permanent improvement.
Okay.
Right, so that, that running total you see from George doesn't have that cash balance in, in there anywhere. And also, you know, as George mentioned, if, if there is a cash flow issue, we would advance from the general fund and then return that advance immediately.
Okay. Okay. Because it looks like future years, you are very wisely not pre-allocating the full amount because you never know what's going to go wrong that we haven't planned for, right?
Right.
And, and there will be critical failure. Thank you, gentlemen, for reminding us.
We do have insurance that we could always go back on, but we don't want to do it unless we have to.
Sure.
Right.
Right. When the boiler explodes, that's something you can't anticipate, right?
They don't explode, don't do that.
Thank you.
When they quit.
Pipes leak, that's fair.
Yeah, but that's one of those slow degenerative things that is going to happen.
A hundred-year-old pipes.
Yeah.
That's, and that's part of the concern we raised last time, if you remember, when we did the HVAC, they did the HVAC assessment for us and we can put, you know, window air conditioners in schools, we can do updates to it, but it's not replacing the electrical behind the walls or the piping that's in the walls. That's still original piping.
And unless you tear out the walls, you can't get to that, yeah.
Right.
Most of your, most of your piping runs underneath the buildings. And generally, there's pipe chases that bring...
Bring it up.
Bring it up and then it branches off of there. But the pipe, the tunnels are some of the worst areas to work in.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
Because everybody wants to be lying on their back underneath a bunch of dripping asbestos-covered pipes. Now, you were able to address the pipe leak behind the historical mural at Oxford.
That was, Mr. Day came up with some solutions and...
And that was fantastic and, and it preserved some art that has value to the community.
Worked with a very helpful individual on that. I'm sorry, I can't remember her name off the top of my head because, but she, it was from Cleveland Art Institute that helped us with this. Now, it's not perfect.
But it was stabilized.
But we stabilized it and made it so it won't advance any further.
So George, what do you and your team need from us?
Besides understanding that this is a difficult job.
A million dollars.
Right. It's, it's the information, so it's, it's out there. You'll, I'm going to keep the 10-year plan as up to date. Again, if things change, I'll make sure that you're all aware of it, if things come up that we're implementing in there. It does change, I mean, throughout the year, it's a change of multiple factors based on needs, but just, I guess, an understanding of what the district's facing. I mean, at some point, maybe not this board, but there's going to have to be decisions made about these older elementary schools and what to do about them. Still have windows that really aren't even in this plan. Roxelle.
Oxford.
Oxford, they have those old attached windows on them, those should go. We're losing so much.
A lot of heat.
A lot of heat going right out those windows. Single-pane glass. That's why we did Cannibaries and Nobles.
Nobles, right.
Right. I'd love to say we see an energy savings there. We probably do, but it doesn't reflect in the bills because energy costs have gone up.
Are the controls contributing to any energy savings as well or is that just a...
They should be.
They, they will, but it's going to take some time to, to see how, we have to manipulate it to, to, to work for us. Because again, we're dealing with equipment that is antiquated to a system that is digital.
It was just turned over to us. So Taj, in fact, we were just sitting down today talking about an issue we had at Garrity this morning, but, I mean, so the staff is learning it, we're sending staff out to training to Gardner. And so the more that they know, the more that we can take care of without having outside contractors come in. Though, we're going to be married to Gardner for a while. Same thing with some other contractors that come in to the high school. The high school is one complex system that, all the training in the world, we, we have, we have people that know what they're doing on that and sit back sometimes and wonder what the heck is going on. And, and this doesn't even cover Heights High, which is coming up on its 10-year anniversary. And that's the point where we have to start implementing maintenance, you know, that these roof maintenance just typically has to start happening at the high school. Little schools will be shortly after that.
And it's centennial anniversary, Heights High, 2026. It will have been there 100 years. Stay tuned for a major celebration of the centennial anniversary of Cleveland Heights High School.
Have there been any significant roof leaks on the new high school roofs?
We've off it lately.
As long as we keep people off of it and we don't have any issues with anything penetrating it as of late, no.
Okay.
We have people working up there, just drop a screwdriver on it and...
Yeah, well, I remember that being an issue and, and the problem of sequence of work, right? I mean, you can't go up there and do an HVAC repair after the roof repair because then you've just gone and trodden all over the roof repair and brought up your tools.
We've kind of worked on that where we've actually put in, where a lot of our AC equipment is now, we've been kind of buying what they call work pads.
Okay.
And putting those on the roof to walk around and you're not actually walking on...
So you can get to the mechanical curves?
Yeah, and it makes it, it's, it's a good fix and as long as the guys stay on them, we're good.
Okay.
Good to know.
And I promised one thing before I close out, I promised Taj that I would mention this. This does not address inside our schools, the carpeting that is way beyond its life expectancy. Some of those reports I mentioned earlier back to 2007, that brings up carpeting that should be replaced. We have not replaced it. We go into some schools and we use duct tape, whatever we can to keep the carpet down because when you, it, it just gets into some costly replacement that...
Should we be replacing carpet?
Yes, but not with carpet.
Right, that's what I was going to say.
VCT is...
Anything, the vinyls that they have out there now, the vinyls we used in the middle schools.
Middle schools, right.
Are so much better and everybody, they, they're now putting in sound control, deadening materials in it so that you don't have the echo effect that you do in a standard tile floor.
That's great. Well, I feel like we've kept you all up late tonight.
Yeah, thanks for your work, this is...
I appreciate GPD coming in and helping support us and...
Yeah, and at some point, we would like to know the cost to replace that carpet with flooring.
I think we have all numbers, but that's 12, 15 years.
Well, we need new numbers because those old numbers are probably worthless to us at this point.
Yes.
But, all right, well, thank you for being here. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Mr. Trimble.
Yes.
Mr. Brenshaw?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Good night, we are adjourned.